This conference will now be recorded.
This is just our city council workshop.
Okay.
City Council workshop and we're going to have presentations from Chamber Nation.
From Chambers?
From Chamber Nation.
We're ready to go. I'd like to call our meeting order. This is a workshop. We're not going to go through the other formality. You can't talk. Formalities. We have, this evening, we have a gentleman with us from Chamber Nation, Mr. Scully, I believe it is.
Yep.
And he will be giving us a presentation. Please approach the podium and you're welcome to start when you're ready.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you all for allowing me this opportunity and thanks Ed for visiting with me.
No problem.
And see if we can get you down and present. So, you know, I'm looking at your Escalon sign and you see it's a beautiful logo and it's a great look. And I've grown around your town and you have a lot of businesses. You also have businesses proposed, but you have a lot of businesses in your county or region. And in today's world, you know, it's really important that Escalon be online. And I'm not talking about a website. I'm not talking about that type of thing. I'm talking about actually building a community of products and services. And unfortunately, in this day and age, people are so busy running their businesses that if you put in a system and you put a big login, but it could even be 12 foot by 12 foot. It's very hard to get businesses to log in to contribute that kind of data. So, we've worked for a number of years trying to get over this issue because we provide infrastructure to hundreds of communities throughout the country. We're also in Europe. And we've learned how to crack the code to start really getting more and more businesses engaged and built out. This kind of got, this really got started with my son's house Christmas. And the question was, I just said, hey, where can I go to check out Escalon? What do you mean? And I proceeded to look and I didn't do it. I did it just because I wanted to learn about Escalon. And I found Wikipedia and I found the city's website and everything looked really nice. But the businesses, the business community weren't centralized. Now, we also looked at things as two downtowns.
I'm going to start with the celebration, make sure I'm all right here.
Two downtowns where, you know, you're looking to promote the physical downtown. Everybody is. But if you think about it, the best way to promote a physical downtown is to actually have an online downtown. Another thing to think about, and it's not my field of business, but in most communities, newspapers don't have the subscriber levels that they used to have. And local radio doesn't have the listener levels that they used to have. So, if you think about where does a business owner go today to advertise their products and services? coupon and all things like that. It's, you know, in many cases, it's not really there anymore. It's really changing. So, traditionally, inside the Chambers' Corner, we put in our whole entire operating system, which is rather expensive. And then we add this component to it so that we can take their membership management system, in their case, it was a business management system, and extend it from the database to a complete business infrastructure for promoting the community and helping business as a whole. So, and when you actually end up putting everything together, you have a very powerful network that's indexed very, very well. And then to prove it, because if it's an economic development program, you know, there's a lot of things out there that kind of talk this. But it's really important to have detailed reports that are community-wide so that people can actually dive into the details and see exactly how it's performing. And that's exactly how this program works. So, I have quite a bit of information to share with you. I appreciate it if you ask any questions you'd like along the way. I did put all the information I'm going to be presenting to you today. I have it at agenda dot document dot town. So, any of your listeners or anybody here that would like to come back to this later, you certainly can. Just a little background, I'm the CEO of Chamber Nation. We started the company in 2005, building the infrastructure to automate Chambers of Commerce and to try to improve their efficiencies. We currently support hundreds of communities throughout the country. And if we take that last map that was shot, I think September of last year, you compare it to this live map, you can see that we've grown quite a bit since then. And a lot of it has to do with businesses and communities really realizing that they do need a network. Because a network is really like a logo. It's out there to present the community. And on the online side of it, most communities, it's completely missing. Our mission is really simple. Amazon is all centralized, so why not build a community? And that's our mission. Our mission is to help communities do that efficiently. And since we don't depend on businesses to log in in order to get everything started and built out, we actually do that work for the businesses. And then it becomes more or less like fly wood. Because every month, they start getting these reports emailed to them or they can get them from their electronic dashboard anytime they want to. And they start realizing that, hey, this is a pretty good system. Maybe I should log in here and dig in a little bit. And when they see their beautiful advertising dashboards provided by the city, the more inclined to start using it. Because they can see, number one, that's using it. Number two, they're seeing results coming in from the network. So, our marketplaces are also beautiful. And eighty percent of your businesses, I know maybe twenty percent is them, but for quick, are not retailers. So, we have to build this with that in mind so that the vast majority of even professional services, contractors, doctors, lawyers, dentists, whatever it might be, veterinarians, they'll find a purpose in it and they'll buy the infrastructure to help expand their message and get out to the community. So, but there is twenty percent or so that are retailers. We wanted to make sure that the communities could serve them quite well. So, there's an ability in there to make a switch. And when we put the switch, it actually turns into a retail system. And it's commission-free infrastructure with a checkout system that allows people to add the card, add the card, add the card and check out. But when they check out, no money changes hands. What it does is it packages the order, sends it to emails it to the seller, attend and order request receipt to the buyer. Because a lot of community businesses don't have the time to manage inventory. So, it gives them a chance to make sure they have it in stock. And then they can call the person and say, your order is in stock and come down and pick it up, pay it with phone, pay it here. They utilize the infrastructure they already have for collecting money. And another good thing is we don't get involved in the monetary transactions. So, the city or us don't get involved in fees and things like that if there's a return issue. So, why doesn't it work? Well, first of all, I think it's important to realize that since we serve, you know, six figures of members across the country, we're helping the Chambers of Commerce and other membership organizations to please their members. So, we've learned how to roll the red carpet out and do a really good job in taking care of the businesses. And the dollar of the amount of money that's invested in our programs, exception as well, I think if you look into the details, you'd be surprised. But that's because the organizations that we work with typically don't have a lot of money for this type of effort. So, we knew that it had to be a very efficient infrastructure that we could build a team around and get a lot of leverage. Like, you're going to see in here what's provided to businesses. It is very automated, so it's not like we have to go build the catalog and then go build the mobile app and then go build the texting engine. We don't have to build this thing separately. We one infrastructure, type it in, put it in, and it feeds out to all of the different tools. We have great people on our support center. We do handle the business onboarding. And we do provide an advertising dashboard to all of your business community owners or business owners. And we provide ongoing support. So, there's the 855 ad numbers, there's an 844 it's done. And we actually answer our own and we answer tickets. We're very proud of that. We do a good job and we have plenty of testimonials that are true. So, if I continue down, these are the program links. And on the screen I have earlier, the economic development screen. I won't go through this whole economic development site, but the point here is that we believe economic development really has a lot to do with online work today. It's very, very important because that's how people are looking for just about everything. And when people locate the Escalon marketplace and they go in there and they see all this wonderful stuff, and I'll show you the marketplace and see if they see it working. It's pretty nice. Open for Business Program is the, one of the models that we use for promoting the program. This is ideas, you choose your community and then that launches you into a particular city. And then from that particular location, from that particular link, that's what the city does for that particular, for your community. And then they don't even have to go back to the main site. But I want to show you what this looks like. So, we go down here. This is the Community Welcome Center. There's different options for being turned on or turned off. All of the support is included for all options, so it doesn't cost you more to have this turned on or that turned off. It's just all included. So, as you can see, and I'll show you a live version. So, this would be something that could be linked to the city's website as the community marketplace. And we have a, I explained to Tammy that our infrastructure is fair with us. We have syndicated calendar systems so that you can have multiple organizations and have one calendar that automatically rolls up into the city of Escalon's calendar. So, you can come and have everything or you can go into the different calendars. We also have a complete broadcast messaging system, all drag and drop. It works like constant contact or mailchimp, but it's all built in. And it would communicate easily out to all of the business. This would be considered a digital business database. And then this is the, you know, it lists on local community advertising. This is just showing another way to promote the infrastructure in your community with different types of carousel, sliders and embed code. And then down below, these are tourist photos. So, anybody in your community that is attracting bed and breakfasts or restaurants, anything like that, is trying to attract tourism. There's a tourist booth that they're able to activate and contribute geography to. And that helps automate and promote your tourist section of your marketplace. Also, your own virtual booth. So, if you ever want, if anybody in the community that wants to really promote a business expo, all of your businesses have their own expo booth. They can also use this like a doorbell for people that want to request one on a monthly month. So, they can come in through the marketplace, click on it. And if there's not an online meeting already scheduled, which in most cases there may not be, then there's a button for them to click in order to get instructions out of the request. They have an online meeting right away. So, that's providing a very valuable tool. And all of these tools that are built out for the businesses are all aggregated together, but they also stand separately so that they can connect it to the website and use it as an extension to their current website. We're not building websites. We're building community systems that kind of focus on products and services so it can be used in a lot of different ways. This is the Open for Business Directory. So, your city directory will be really beautiful. And remember, since we're responsible for doing the onboarding, it looks terrific. We're not going to end up a year from now going, well, it sounded good at the time, but it really never will. This, we really do a great job giving these setups so we have a lot to share. And you can see from the directory itself, you can see that it connects to their business website. They have the built-in contact form, Google's location of their business and the marketing landing page. It's something that's a whole nother component of this, but that's designed to really help the community. So, there's two infrastructures being provided. One of them is a business management system. And from Google's point of view, it looks just like a business association. So, typically, they index very well. The directory has complete member profiles built into it or business profiles built into the directory. So, that helps get the association quote-unquote "system" indexed very, very well. And that helps drive even more traffic into the marketplace. So, we're leveraging two networks to help make sure this works. And then this is the marketing landing page here on the left. We're actually doing, we're going to upgrade on these. But this is connected into the business directory for Escalon. And then from there, it connects into each business catalog. And then from there, it goes into each individual product and service. So, community mobile apps. This is very important. The businesses are, the community is provided with a business app. So, Escalon72727 is probably where it would be at. When people text Escalon72727, it doesn't work, no, of course. That will deliver the community app. And that community app has your event sign. It has all of your businesses in there. And from that app, they can get to all the individual business apps. Because each business will also have their own mobile app. And these are mobile apps, so they're designed to be also indexed. And it provides you with a complete mobile experiment for the business community. And once again, since we're doing the setup and onboarding, these are going to be popular. They're going to look very nice. So, and then you have your electronic business card. That is the mobile app. It's an actual picture. But the reason we call it that is because each business can have their own texting keyword and number included. And when that's advertised, because it's built into everything and somebody does that action, it will actually send a text message to your business owner, letting them know that this person has opted into their catalog. And they can text them back or they could literally call in and say, I'm the owner of Escalon Landscaping. I appreciate your interest in my business. I'm the owner. Feel free to text me back with any questions or if you'd like me to set up, you know, the time. So, it is an electronic business card. And once again, it's designed to help promote each individual business, but as a whole, it's helping Escalon, you know, as a group. So, exposure is critical. And there's a lot of talk about SEO, but the thing is, is that there is no SEO, but products and services aren't often, I mean, there's nothing to SEO. So, the point is, we really focus on documentation and building everything out so that things, many more things can be indexed successfully in Escalon. So, the bottom here, this is a monthly order report. And this is email to each business every month that we come from the city and will let them know how the system performed for the previous month. And there is a way for them to do date ranges so they can look over a particular period of time. And like I said before, I think the most important benefit of all is it's actually done for them and the support is continually supported. So, they have ongoing support. And you never sell your businesses anything after. That's just completely off the plate. When you put this infrastructure in, we're beholden to you and providing outstanding service to your businesses. And that's exactly what we do. So, going back to my page here, I wanted to take you through, this is documentation team. This is the support center for the businesses. This is where they go to request support. Once again, it shows them that all the support and the promotion is included. We have a member support tab at the top. And we have three different ways that they can connect with us because we want to support them. We're not running away from their business community. We intend and want to support them. So, they can submit a ticket, they can call us during normal business hours. And at the bottom, they can even set up a Zoom meeting where our member assistants will work with them, do a screen share and answer their questions and make any changes that they might, they might request. Included services, of course, the documentation assistant, the checkout. And then here, a trade show booth. And then also, we have the mobile web apps, the custom texting keywords and also the return on investment reports. So, if we go into a live, sort of live sites here. When I chose Bull's for Katie, this is the fact that she's from Chamber Tech. They've added like 300 members in the past 20 months. And they give us credit for helping them a lot. I'm sure we get to the majority of it. And this is, this is also the type of sites that you, a beautiful site for the marketplace. But if we click here, enter the Welcome Center, this is how it looks. And you can see here that the community website, we go back to the city's website. Service Services, this will bring up all of the businesses and the community. And these are sponsors, by the way. So, this is, these spots are available. And if you're the city and you're not looking to commercialize it like that, then you can use it for parks and recreation. You can use it for all different types of things if you would want to come from the city. Also, you can see here, this is, these are the businesses here. And for whatever reason, I'll open up this one. And you can see this is the Aussie Pet Mobile in Katy, Texas. And you can see this is an example of a catalog. And then you can go into the items, the items for the products or services here. Also, if you notice, we do have the mobile wide ADA compliance component built into all of these pages. So, that's there right out, right out the gate. And then also, here if we go back, you can see here, we can actually run, there's texting directories too. So, the texting directory, this will actually show you the different businesses and you can go by category as well. So, we just go to the county, for instance. You can see here the texting keywords and numbers. And that texting keyword and number is what delivers that mobile application directly to that business. And if the mobile is set up, which most of them are, they'll be notified of that person that requested that mobile application. So, also, here if we go back to the Welcome Center, you can see the advertising reports. And these are our real-time advertising reports. And you can choose the duration. This is one year. And as we go down, you can see these are the businesses in our calendar quarter. And you can see that the display views and the display clicks, we really want to pay attention to click first. And the reason that you might see more displayed clicks than you would see displayed views is because this member could very well be promoting the texting keywords and numbers. So, it never had to be shown on the internet. It was just directly delivered to that person. So, it was not exposed on Google or Bing. And to me, that's a good sign when you see that. And then if we go down to the bottom here, I can go to page 21 here, not that that really matters. But you'll notice here that you have your numbers. And you can see that the way that the calculations work is you have 25,00186 on a conservative number. That's the advertising value delivers to businesses. And if you look at the last two bullets, when we're building this, we created something called the Chamber Flab where they can have a lot of Chamber effects involved in the design of this. And some of them wanted an ultra-conservative number. But if you buy a Google or Bing or LinkedIn advertising, it's costing you at least $1.50 per huge click through. Try and explore your book for a huge click through. So, that last column is the real, is the real number, in our opinion, of the value of that advertising. And we're not calculating just the views, meaning that that could have been presented on Google's page 10 and no one ever really saw it. We really are calculating that only on clicks and that's it. So, I think you probably get the gist of what it is that we're doing. There is another one here that I have as an example. This is the Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber in Utah. And just to give you a clue of the quality of the sites that you can prefer. And you can see here that they're quite nice. And you can see these sliders are actually coming from a different version of ours. And then this here is the catalogs again. So, here's an example of a directory and the different categories. So, there's a lot of ways to present this information. And it would deliver a lot of value, I believe, to the city of Escalon. And your businesses would appreciate something where every month they're getting reports. And in my opinion, it's reminding the businesses also the city of Escalon is paying attention to them and reminding them every month that we're getting stronger and stronger and stronger. We continue to promote, help promote our businesses. And that's, that's the real value that we're delivering.
Mr. Scully, just to be clear on this, I'm trying to understand exactly how this works. So, your organization basically mentors us how to set up this environment. Is it connected to the city?
Yeah, but I would like to tell you that we do the vast majority of the work to get everything set up.
Okay, so you'll do the majority of the work to set it up, but it is connected to the city?
Yes.
Okay, so the city is now having this website and all these different amenities on the website to promote other businesses in our community to join in and take advantage of them to improve their productivity. Is that kind of where we're going?
Yeah. And I also believe for relocation purposes, re-meeting with industry or businesses, that it lends a lot to how the city is thinking and organizing its business.
So, the resources extended to maybe funding banks and stuff like that as well? I mean, would we be able to go on this and find, for example, funding sources for different projects and businesses? Not in the city, but in businesses.
No, no, this, well, if you have them locally, yes. If you have those facilities locally and they're documented, you could pull them out of the marketplace.
But this is all about your community and your businesses?
I see. And it's not about us advertising in your community. Our, our job is to make sure that this is your advertising community. There's no weird things going on. There's nobody.
What I was wondering, what I was wondering was, you have all these services. But my question was, like, when you say services, but the services have to be fulfilled within our community, the resources. Is that correct?
Your business community is what is built into the marketplace, your existing business community, and we're doing our work.
I get that. So, for example, let's suppose I want to start a new business, but I don't have enough money. But I have a great business plan and I'd like to submit it to somebody for funding. That's not something you do. What you do is you take the local environment and you post, and you'll be involved in this network. And the source, the resources that we have will be in this setup.
Yes, you'll have a place for Escalon to be centralized online.
How does this thing make money?
Well, it doesn't cost a lot of money. It costs $25 per business one time to be set up.
That's pretty reasonable.
And it costs $2.50 a business a month. And if you, when you go over, if you go over $250, then there's a 25% discount monthly that brings it down to around the $88 per business per month. So, there's nothing like it anywhere that's even close to this.
The $2.50 number you're referring to is members that join?
Yes. And we have a minimum of 100, so we have a month-to-month service agreement that I provided to Tammy. It shows a minimum of 100. Okay. Bill, that's $2,500 set up, $250 per month for the first 100 businesses. After that, you can set that amount to anything more.
Who collects the money?
Your system does automatically. Connected to a virtual account that's owned by the city.
So, the city collects the money and they pay this?
We pay, we provide you with one invoice.
Oh, I get it. And that's a monthly invoice?
Yes.
I get it.
And our payments are month-to-month also.
Okay, so what I see now, we have this webpage with the network on it to facilitate businesses at the Chamber environment. And the city is the facilitator in terms of the page and all that. You're the consultant which charges the city for the setup and all the organization and the monthly update.
That's correct.
So, that's where we're at?
Support, that's, that's exactly what we do.
I just wanted you to clear my head.
Well, first of all, you don't have to create a support center for your online services. Where's that support center?
Okay, what is it, when you say support center, what is it you're supporting? How do you support it?
The business will call us and say, you know, I don't have any photography. Where can I get photos? We'll tell them that we have appropriate license to Adobe. If they want to go to Adobe and pick out an image, we can sell it to them. Pick out an image and we can use that image in their displays.
Okay.
If they have questions that I have, I'm a music landscaper again. We got a new service putting in waterfalls. We got a new service putting in waterfalls, and I want to put all these different waterfalls in my catalog, how do I do that?
Okay, I see what you're talking about, okay.
So they help the businesses with their apps and?
I get it, I get it, I get it, okay. Well, Tammy, you've had time to review it, what do you think?
So it's intriguing, I think it would be good for our business community. I think the hip hop will be whether the city would pay for those startups or not.
Well, I thought the new membership paid for that.
So that's, that's something that we would need to decide.
So what would be the cost initially starting? What's the budget?
So would there be minimum, the, the initial startup would, in essence, well, it's close to twenty-five hundred dollars for a hundred businesses.
That includes a hundred.
Yeah, for a hundred businesses to start up. And then your annual fees for those hundred businesses would be three thousand dollars.
Annual fees, because it's two dollars a?
Two dollars and fifty cents per business.
So it works out to two dollars a year. So what we need is at least the minimum base of a hundred businesses.
Yes. Well, and, and that's the thing, I think, I think that's where you need to, you're gonna have to, I think the city would have to support this initially in order to get it up and running. Because I think some of them would have to see others experience in this program. That's my thought process on it.
I can see the advantages of it, I can see the, there where it could be helping businesses. The question is, do we have a hundred businesses who would agree? And now, one thing I did, I know, I wish Pat Brown would have been here this evening, she's not.
Unless she happens to be online.
I don't know if she is or not.
I don't see anything that says her name, but.
This has been recorded, yes or no?
Correct.
Well, good, she can go back and review it.
Yes, and I just emailed.
Pat Brown is the head of the Chamber, by the way, Mrs. Kelly, that's why I brought the name up. I think the potential's there, I think it's gonna, I think we should talk to Pat. And then maybe with you two sitting down and figure out if it's something we can do. And the council, is the council involved in determining whether we are or not gonna do this?
Well, yeah, because you guys would have to authorize the funding of it.
Okay, but the funding should come for the first time the business is created.
Well, that's the decision we would have to make. Do we want to, do we want to kickstart this program and get it out there for these businesses to help them kickstart their businesses?
Expanding your businesses a lot.
You know, and then, you know, maybe for the first two or three years, the city supports that, right? And the city does that. Then after three years, maybe it's something that we incorporate into our business license.
Oh, good idea, good idea.
And then you don't have to, but of course, you know, that would be another cost, have it to your business license fee. But it's an advertising mechanism for your businesses. And when you make that a central webpage for all your businesses, it only can, you know, assist in drawing people to those businesses. And we could limit it to only businesses in town, so you wouldn't be advertising for businesses outside of town. You would only be advertising for businesses that have business licenses here in the city.
I think, you know, it has great potential, and I, my only question is, where would the funding come from? Do we have a funding source or revenue that would be categorized in this, in this area?
We don't, we don't. The only thing is that I think, and I haven't confirmed this yet, but with the recent monies that are coming to the city from the whole pandemic, I think out of some of those recovery funds, that we could use this to help jumpstart it because this is an economic, you know, mechanism.
I like the idea of some business license. And for me personally, I don't think our business licenses are outrageous, I think they're very reasonable. And I don't think a lot of, with a two dollars fifty cents a month?
Thirty bucks a year.
Thirty bucks a year, it's really not, again, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for anyone else. For me personally, that's no problem.
So the other side of that is, you know, when we, the city, if the city does this, then we host it, right? If you have a business that doesn't renew their license, which, you know, you have the opportunity that you could technically shut off their, their app, where?
Well, if they didn't renew their license, they wouldn't be entitled to it.
Right, right.
And that's like any service, you don't pay for, you don't need to have it.
Correct, yes.
You know what, I don't mind that, I don't think it's unreasonable, I don't, again, personally, you can't speak for anyone else. But personally, I like everything about it. And I think the fact that you could expand your business with this type of technology today, it'd be a good thing. I'd say a lot more people would recognize who has a business in town. Because to be honest with you, if you go on the street and ask, I'll bet you money, there's not probably ten people in town who name fifteen businesses.
Well, I think the other avenue that it opens up, and maybe some of your strengths, which people don't think about, okay? So, you know, like we had tax preparers in town or CCA.
Bingo, good point.
You know, they don't broadcast a lot of advertisements, but maybe with this avenue, they could. I think that there could be other types of services that don't usually do advertising, but this is an advertising tool and an access point. We see on Facebook all the time, people asking for registration, right? So all it takes is somebody to say, hey, go to this, you know, website, and you can find all the businesses in town. You could search by category and, you know, and it's, it's gonna take a while to build up that, you know, catalog. So I, you know, we just caution, obviously, it's not gonna be an immediate, well, I don't know. It could be an immediate return, depending upon the response that you get from the business.
We could also link it to our bulletin board over there and put it up there for people to see.
Yeah, so in some of our discussions, the other gentleman that we were working with, Ron, Ronald. Yeah, he had also mentioned, like, you could have it flash up there where it's, you text Escalon to the seven-two-seven-two.
Right.
Yeah, and then it brings them to the city's, you know, yeah, marketplace, so they can search for all those.
Oh, I get it.
You know, looking for a place to eat, text Escalon, blah, blah, blah. So that's the concept of the, the program.
Let's hear from one of the council members, Councilman Bellinger, what do you think?
I'm interested in it, I'm a little concerned that we have nobody from the Chamber here and no businesses that knew about this meeting or here.
There's some online, I just see a few names online.
A little concerned about participation in this meeting. I think we need to do a little more investigation with our businesses.
Well, I did send an email out to all the people that I have email contacts for, yeah.
Well, I'd like to see a little more response from our community before we jump onto this.
We also did it, we also advertised it on Facebook. And I think that it was in the Escalon Times, obviously, you know, I had mentioned it tomorrow.
Well, I'm not sure how tech savvy a lot of these people are, but I can tell you right now, I see the potential. And I think it could be a very good thing if it was promoted properly and people were taught how to use it, because it's not really that complicated. I'm not a computer genius, and I can see where I could do it. Councilman, what do you think?
Yeah, I was wanting to bounce off Councilmember Bellinger's point regarding the businesses in town. This, this result doesn't surprise me, and I'll tell you why, because a lot of them, they're working their tail off.
That's right.
And one thing that's really a good way to describe a lot of Escalon businesses is that they're often, they're working so darn hard and they never have a chance to look up and see what advantages they can take advantage of out there. To improve their business so they're working smarter instead of hard. And so there might be some value to this there. Also, the thing regarding our chamber is businesses will often ask, what are we getting for that chamber membership? Which is no ask for this, well, the advantage here is that you're not talking about ninety dollars, under twenty dollars, you're talking about?
Thirty dollars.
The big thing I'm worrying about is two things. Number one, it sounds very attractive that businesses like retail business can have actual marketplace, you have shopping cart. And where do they actually, really where they get the benefit, they can click on the shopping cart?
Shopping cart, okay. So the way it works is that when they activate that from professional services for retail, they have pricing, they now have pricing, and when people add the card, add the card, it sends a formal notification to the business owner here that you have an order. It also goes into the order dashboard to the business system they are logged in, they can see it right. And it goes, and it sends the buyer an email, receive request, order request receipt check. And it says, this is what the business wanted to order, we sent it, here's the contact information of the business, and so you can contact them easily. And the business owner gets the order, and it instructs them that please see if they have it in stock and to contact the buyer. And they call them up, say, is the order ready? Do you want to pay over the phone, or do you want to pay, and you can come down for folks like that, or whatever.
So for some of our businesses?
And there's no commission, I'm sorry, there's no commission.
Okay, oh, that's beautiful. Because for some of our businesses in town, they're pretty tech savvy or ready. And that's part of the reason they've survived and actually thrived through COVID. So they may use this as additional source. But regarding a lot of the other businesses that, again, they've got their heads down, they're working tails off, whose responsibility is it to contact those businesses, especially the first member of businesses?
I mean, when we first started this, this is version two, we made a major upgrade about four months ago, made a major upgrade. But when we started this service, we had all intention of contacting every business at home. Nobody answered their phones, right? No, the brother. Okay, so what we did is went to plan two, and that was to research their business on the internet, everything that's associated specifically with their business, use the best content to build this app. Then what happens is there's a notification in the database that this business has been completed. Click here to view it, and then you can see it, most time it's pretty nice. And then you click a button that sends an ongoing notification to that business. And it gives them a button to click to connect with their member assistant and make any changes, to do anything they want to do on an ongoing basis, we continue to support them. And that's it. They also can use their login credentials if they want to, to go right in and work in their dashboard.
So then initially, we're, you, you?
We do all that.
You do all that?
Yeah, there is absolutely nothing. Maybe it's a new business, home-based business, and there's absolutely nothing. We have a horn that's called Premium Entrance, and it's premiumentrance.com. We actually send that to them. We'll even call in some cases and let them know that we're setting their listing up to the Escalon, and we just needed this information in order to set up. So those that really don't have resources and they need something, they can use this to their benefit too.
I really see us with the bill for the first year or two. I mean, just every incentive in the world to get someone to hook up and?
I want to hear more discussion in terms of how we started, but anyway. Hooked in, the girl, what do you got?
So this to me is like the modern version of the shop Escalon promotions that we've seen over our lifetime here. You know, seeing the signs, we always try to promote businesses in Escalon. And from time to time, there would be a chamber action to try and see that through. So I think it's not the modern version of that. Regardless of buying from the businesses, I see a public benefit by the city advertising businesses that could potentially generate revenues for the city, whether they pay for it or not. So I think there is benefit if we were to go forward to see how it could work on the city's dime initially. I would expect that there'd be some partnership over time with businesses that see some sort of benefit from it. And then we could transition over time into, you know, having the fees transferred over to other business licenses. I would imagine some businesses might want to opt out, or there might be a timeframe on this that give it a, give it a go. If it doesn't work, then shut it down, so.
If I'm like, I have, I have nothing. You know, if you ask a business, would you like a mobile application? Would you like your own customer, would you like a beautiful product and services tab that you can add on your website with just one button? And also, if you want to start receiving links from the city's website back to the business. And yeah, that's a valuable, that's a very valuable trusted property, is the city. So those link backs back to the businesses is very, it's very valuable.
Yeah, I like spreading the costs around too, giving low-cost entry into that.
Well, if you, if you mentioned the word partnership, I'd like to just show you one, one thing here real quick. And by the way, this business license check is a whole different discussion. You have our database, and you connect all these on search engine. You can actually see the ones that have business licenses, which means you're not going to lap any businesses in your system without them. So what happens is the search engine brings up all the businesses on Escalon, and the ones with business licenses are at the top of indicators, and the rest of them may not have a license. So that's a potential too. But what I wanted to show you is this.
Wait a minute, Mrs. Kelly, how would they be, there shouldn't be any businesses on this network that isn't?
Right.
Have the same business.
Well, no, this is, this is a separate, this is a separate tool.
The only thing I would say though, we brought the idea of, did it cost a business license? What I would suggest is a person can have the option of not being involved with it, but yet could not be on the system. Because I don't think we should be able to force people into something like that. I don't think that's the way we would do this, I don't think that's a great idea.
I think you'd have to evaluate as a time limit.
Sure.
Because if you have a hundred businesses, I mean, the city would have to pay for, if we did the trial phase of the two to three years, then the city would be on the hook going forward if we didn't get a hundred businesses.
Right.
So that would just be something we would have to understand.
Right, but I don't think we have the right to eliminate people from business license because they don't want to be part of this, but I'm kidding that.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so but at the same time, they don't have a right to, to the service either. So in other words, there'd be business licensed people in our community that can't be on here, where the ones had really to pay the extra fee to be there. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to let you know that if there is a partnership potential with the city, there's, there's space for pretty additional sponsor locations on all of these pages. So if you think about a business getting, you know, five thousand click firsts, that sponsor was on every single one of those pages. Doesn't mean they got click firsts, that means if they were, their impressions. Yes, there's three other companies in the city that are looking to support economics of the economy growth. They could easily split up the cost and take the credit for providing these awesome tools to the business community.
I think the best sales for this, a success from those who join in are successful with it. I think given a year's trial or whatever we decide to do, it's gonna be enough that people can see the benefits from it. Because if you use it, there's definitely gonna be a benefit from it, I can see that now. Especially when people are trying to network, it's a great tool for networking.
Also, if you have, if you're gonna text this, send a text to this number, you need a list of places where traffic is flowing through town.
Yeah, I think that Escalon, the seven-two-seven-two-seven is a prominent location with, tell the business community that, you know, hey, I want a house right here, I can see myself, this is awesome. Because they all have their own texting keyword and numbers, they don't have to depend on people going to that app and ordering their app.
I like it.
What's a close to town in this area that has that key service?
What's that?
Close to town or a couple of key areas in this area?
Rancher Cordova, and Terrell's Chamber is moving to a virtual model, and they, they're going to this block now.
Well, so Tammy, what?
Rancher Cordova, Diane, this is her name.
And it's not the Chamber that's there?
Rancher Cordova Chamber. Tammy, at ranchercordova.org, and they're using their platform there.
What do you need from us to do?
So tonight was just to present it to the council, and then if we want to do any additional workshops on it and see if we can get more of the business community input on this, we can schedule that, or we can bring it back to the council to make some kind of direction on this, whichever you choose.
Tonight's meeting or next meeting?
It would have to be a major meeting.
Okay, so at this point, we're pretty much where we can go.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you, do you have any other cities that are more of a festival than that? You have on board that we can take a look, possibly, other this area or other space or anything like that?
One being though, first of all, going to the city is new for us. We have drawn the Chambers of Commerce, we're talking to Tammy, she liked the concept. And, and Ed Als, which is, I was introduced to, spoke to him over the phone, and he said that he would bring it to you and see if it would be okay to come in. But Solvay, now that was technically sold to the Chamber, but the city has now come in and said they want to put this into the business program and everything. And I will tell you, the same thing occurred recently in Wittenburg, Arizona. And I will tell you, the same thing occurred recently in in Wittenburg, Arizona, where I was told that actually today at this, that the city was gonna be paying for open for business program for a whole other set of businesses that have members. So they must have worked something out because I couldn't imagine the chamber, you know, literally wanting that, but, um, they did that. And you mentioned, uh, like workshop classes. We have classes often, this is one of our classes here that, um, your businesses can sign up for. And, um, Kimberly Vaughn, which actually lives in the Central Valley, she's the founder of somebody here we know her, founder of Successful Women in America International Living Festival. She's just, she's purchased like six of our systems and built really successful communities. So I asked her if you could hire her to do the training and she's very motivational and can really show the business community, this is how you wanna structure your app, this is how you wanna promote it. And we pay for those seminars for everybody to attend and we charge.
Mr. Scully, I want to take about five minutes and let anybody out in these are on the internet or here personally have input if they'd like to. And then I'm gonna shut you off because I'd like a little break between the next meeting and this one. So if anyone has any questions they'd like to ask Mr. Scully, please, uh, let us know. You can come to the podium and, uh, ask your question if you like. If there's anyone on the internet that'd like to speak about this, uh, you're welcome to at any time. So if I don't hear from anyone, we're gonna re, gonna count, we're gonna move on to, well, you're more than welcome to. And then after this goes off for a couple of minutes and we're gonna shut it down by five, because I want to find a break.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
You mentioned Google in here. And we know how lately woke Google and all those other are. Should a business put something out there that Google doesn't like, would Google shut them down? That's my question.
That's wonderful, all right. Hold up, Mr. Scully, just get all this and then you can answer all the questions, it's just anymore. Uh, does anyone else like to say anything? Uh, how do we ask the internet to answer?
Oh, yeah, anybody on the GoToMeeting would like to say anything, please, um, use your help.
Yeah, I want somebody to break in the door or something, so.
No, I'm not seeing.
Mr. Scully, if you'd like to respond to that, you're welcome to.
I was, I was assuming Google could shut anybody down they wanted.
Bingo.
They'll have a website, but we just wouldn't be in there. Not experienced in anything like that personally.
Okay, I don't think there's gonna be hot with people, you know, it's possible, anything's possible. It's not likely, but it's possible. Okay, well, listen, I want to thank you for the time you've taken to give us. I think it's been informative, I think the council has learned a lot from you and I think the staff is, uh, interested. And I think we're gonna bring it back to one of our meetings and we'll make a call on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna adjourn for a few minutes till next meeting.